A quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. If we have an interpreter here this evening, I'd like to invite you to come to the podium and let the audience know that your services are available. I'll let Ms. Wester speak.
Aquellos que necesiten traductor o intérprete tenemos dispositivos atrás con nuestros intérpretes. Si necesitan pueden ir atrás y agarrar un día positivo. Gracias.
Thank you. For our flag salute this evening, we have the Hail High School JROTC under the direction of Major Mike McGuffey. They will lead tonight's flag salute. Please stand as we prepare for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the posting of colors.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join the Nathan Hale High School Junior ROTC Color Guard in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the posting of colors. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Faith, I know you'll be proud to introduce tonight's cadets.
I think Dr. Gist also has some information. You want to go first?
Go ahead.
All right. Well, as you can see, I'm like a very proud parent with these cadets. They've always done a tremendous job. And I think the fact of that is that they're led by Major McGuffey, who's sitting here on the very front row, and Master Sergeant Gray. And the principal is Dr. Sheila Riley. They're all here tonight to give them their regards. The pledge leader tonight was Cadet Staff Sergeant Bailey Kirkham. The color guard was Cadet Second Lieutenant Andrew Carpenter. Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Zachary Cahy. Cadet Command Sergeant Major Savannah Asher. Cadet Second Lieutenant J.C. Hines. The greeter was Cadet First Sergeant Delaney Guzman. And the photographer, which was Captain Aaron Applegate. And we are very, very pleased to have you all here tonight and thank you. You want to give us the information about our special students?
I would love to do that, Board Member Faith. Thank you so much. I just want to echo again the congratulations to each of you and thank you for being here to present the colors for us tonight. You all did an awesome job. We're always grateful for the leadership of Major McGuffey and Sergeant Gray and of course, Dr. Riley. You all may have noticed that this was a little bit of a special presentation of colors tonight. And that's because the two cadets who stayed, who did the championship, the drill that they were showing you, are cadets Zach Cahy and Vanessa Asher. They recently placed first in the Oklahoma State Drill Championships in each of their categories. How great is that? Yes, so exciting. The Nathan Hale Junior ROTC program has a long history of success at these kind of competitive drill meets. And their achievements certainly highlights what's happening here in Tulsa, the great work that's happening at Hale. And they've been able to display this incredible work at the district level, the city level, the state level, and even the national level. Zach is a senior at Hale. He has plans for college and the Marine Corps. And Vanna is a junior, but her plans already include attending the United States Air Force Academy and becoming a fighter pilot. We are incredibly proud of their work and of the work of everyone involved with the Hail JROTC program. They obviously have shown incredible diligence and dedication and work that has gone into just a little glimpse of what we were able to see tonight. So join me again in congratulating and thanking Zach and Vanna along with their colleagues and the leaders from Hale High School. Thank you again. And congratulations on your first place. Thank you, Major McGuffey. Yes. Oh, that's awesome. We're grateful for Dr. Riley's leadership as well.
I want to remind everybody that wishes to address the board to sign up with our clerk at the end of the board table, Ms. Cindy Hutchings. There is a five-minute limit to those comments. And upon approval of our consent agenda, we don't accept any more speakers or comment requests. From there, we have a motion to, we need to consider the agenda this evening. And are there any changes before we take a motion?
We do have a change to tonight's agenda, Madam President and Board members. Please move Item C2 listed under Special Presentations, Awards, and Resolutions to the Information Agenda as Item G14. That's all.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I think it's appropriate that we started out with such a great JROTC presentation, given that we're on the eve of the election. And I hope everyone has either early voted or has their plan to vote tomorrow. As you know, TPS and several other districts have decided that tomorrow is a civic engagement day. So not only can you vote tomorrow, you can support a poll worker. I heard some pretty famous people brought some donuts to poll workers today in Virginia. So, you know, I think any of us, if we showed up with donuts at a poll, we'd be close to a celebrity. So whatever you can do to support getting out the vote, I'm so proud of Tulsa. I've seen the early voting numbers and absentee voters' vote numbers that they're posting every day. And we're going to do so, so well. And just to see all the support and enthusiasm in the community for voting is fantastic. So it's an exciting night. And tomorrow, at the end of the evening, we'll be starting into a new, no matter what happens, it will be all, be new. And we'll have lots of new legislators, given our term limit situation. Could have up to 40 percent new legislators. So it'd be all of our jobs to educate all those legislators about the great things about Tulsa Public Schools and also all of the support that we need. So I appreciate you all being here this evening. And I'm going to move to Dr. Gist, who is going to move into the rest of our special presentations.
Thank you, Madam President. As you probably know, the month of November is Native American Heritage Month. And in honor of this, we have asked Deidra Prevett, who's the manager of Indian Education here with Tulsa Public Schools, to join us tonight to tell us a little bit more about the great work that she and everyone on the Indian Education team here in Tulsa Public Schools do, the services they provide to our students and school communities. So we're really thrilled to have you join us here, Ms. Prevett. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Gist. Thank you very much for allowing me to come before you again to share with you our Native American program here at Tulsa Public Schools. Let's see here. There we go. So who do we serve? Well, within the state of Oklahoma, we have 38 federally recognized programs, Native American tribes, and one state-recognized tribes. However, all of our kids represent 47 tribes found throughout the United States. Currently, we have 3,600 kids enrolled in our Indian Ed program. That represents about 8 percent of our population, but we still have 2,655 kids that we need to get enrolled. So with that, our resource advisors are working diligently to get those kids on board so we can service them as well. So our tribes, even though we live in Creek Nation, Cherokee tribe represents the biggest tribe at 22 percent of our Native American population, we also have a rather large unidentified population. That is just information that wasn't picked up during enrollment that we are working on as well. Our Creek population represents 17 percent of our Native Americans. So who are we? We have seven resource officers or advisors that are certified, that work with all of our schools. We have four onsite teacher assistants or tutors. We have 21 after-school tutors that are made up of certified TPS employees that are paid a stipend. We have two Indian Education Office staff, and we have five parents on our Indian Education Parent Committee. So our committee meets monthly, and they help guide the program on design implementation and evaluating the two programs that come together to make up Indian Education, which are Title VI, which is funded by the U.S. Department of Education, and then Johnson O'Malley, which is contracted through the Creek Nation and Cherokee Nation as well. So what services do we provide? We provide teachers assistants at four school sites. They also, they provide tutoring. They go into the classrooms, they pull out. They also offer cultural aspects. Our tutors, the 21 tutors are at 14 different school sites that provide after-school tutoring in math and reading. My resource advisors provide assistance in career exploration and hire. They were often taking groups on college tours. Our Johnson O'Malley students receive school supplies, and we also offer leadership development classes and academic competitions. Our cultural aspect, our teacher resource advisors, our teacher assistants provide cultural presentation, rich in Native American history, culture, arts, and crafts, and of course, the ever-loving field trips. And then we offer 10 cultural exchange days throughout the school year at 10 various school sites. So in order to become eligible for Title VI, all a guardian has to do is fill out a 506 form indicating that their child is a member of a federally recognized Native American tribe. And for Johnson O'Malley eligibility, all it takes is a copy of their tribal citizenship cards. So where are we located? We are hidden nicely in the Grant Building, which is also South Transportation, at 7635 East, 41st Place. Our office hours are between 8:00 and 4:00. And here is our web address, which also provides the 506 form that parents can download and fill out and send in. You see, we've got a long address there. It will get you there. And then, of course, our Facebook page, IndianEdTulsa. So follow us, see what else is going on throughout the school year, and that's Indian Ed in a nutshell.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Prevett?
Thank you.
Thank you again so much for joining us and for everything that you and everyone on your team do for our students. We're very grateful. I also want to just make sure that Laura Grasso is recognized there in the audience. She certainly does an amazing job as Executive Director of Language and Cultural Services. So good to see you here tonight, Laura. And that concludes our special presentations, Madam President. Dr. Gist, I think you're going to present Items D1. It does not conclude our special presentations. Thank you for catching that. We have one other very important topic to discuss. I imagine that many of you, if not even perhaps most of you in the room, have participated in or certainly are familiar with the One Voice process that happens here in our community. This is the One Voice Regional Legislative Agenda. Item C1 on tonight's agenda is a motion and a vote on the motion to endorse the Tulsa Metro Chambers 2019 One Voice Regional Legislative Agenda. This includes educational support at both the state and federal levels. And it's certainly been a privilege and an honor for me, for board members, for, like I said, so many in this room, to participate and to be a part of that process, which really is an example of bringing Tulsans together too and people in the region to say, here are things that matter to us, here are needs that we have to make sure that our community is represented at the state and federal level when important decisions are being made and to advocate for those. So we are really grateful tonight to have Zach Stoichkov, who's here from the Chamber, he's the Chambers Vice President of Governmental Affairs, and he's going to talk to us about this resolution.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gist. And Madam President, Board members, thank you again for considering the 2019 One Voice Regional Legislative Agenda. This is, as Dr. Gist said, a very unique public-private partnership where K-12 education, higher education gets together with chambers of commerce, business communities from across Northeast Oklahoma, and education can really share the views that they have with the people who are advocates for that in non-traditional spaces. So when businesses go to the Capitol, they're really looking at what One Voice taught them, what you all taught them for participating in that and showing them what those priorities were. So I do want to give a special thanks and shout out to the TPS staff and administrators and board members who participated. Thank you all. We couldn't have done this without you. What you have before you is a fairly similar list of priorities as last year. We've broken them up into buckets that include ensuring a prosperous economy, building transportation that's critical to business, as well as ensuring an educated and healthy workforce. At the top of that list, you see that section that includes key issues like addressing the teacher shortage, as well as coming up with a long-term, sustainable funding plan for education at the state level. That's something that we'll be pushing for and certainly have been pushing for and will continue to be pushing for. I do want to mention that we had record attendance in our nine task forces that came up with this issue list very democratically this year. And then on One Voice Summit, where really had a cross-sector of business, private, public, economic development that came and developed and voted on the list that you see right here before you. So happy to answer any questions, but pretty straightforward. One Voice, we've done for 10 years and continues to get bigger and stronger every year. Last year, we had 77 endorsing organizations. It included Tulsa Schools, Area K-12, and Chambers of Commerce from Taliaqua to Sepulpa. So really want to stress that regional and cross-sector participation.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Stoichkov. I will entertain a motion to.
Move/approve.
Is there a second? Second. I know Dr. Gist, Ms. Shannon, myself, I think other members of the board participated in this process at different stages. And I'll say it's just very encouraging to see all the people who deeply care about this and are engaged. And I think this kind of relationship is really what helps us advance when we get to a moment like we did last year at the Capitol, when we were trying to get the teacher rates passed and we had all of the weight of not just the education community. In many ways, we're all the education community, but we did have the defined business community walking with us every step of the way. So it's a wonderful relationship, and I hope it continues to bear fruits. If there's no more comment, I will call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Need to approve the minutes of the October 23 regular meeting of the board. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions on the minutes from the October 23, 2018 meeting? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. That'll bring us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move/approve.
Second. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. We have several action agenda items this evening. As a reminder, these have all come from the, come before the board previously on an information agenda. Item F1 is a post-factum approval to renew the contract with Tulsa Realty 126 LLC, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to provide facility space for Tulsa Learning Academy for the 2018-2019 school year. The cost is not to exceed $9,500. This comes from the building fund. Any questions regarding this item? I do have a comment. I think I said all of these items were on the information agenda previously, and I bet this one, I don't recall this being on there previously. Is that correct? So I just want to be truthful this evening. Sometimes things come on the action item when we need to get quick approval and they're not on information. So we have a motion on the table?
Move/approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. F2 is a purchase, is a recommendation to purchase services from WestEd San Francisco, California, to provide support for pilot teachers and school leaders in strengthening formative assessment practices within their classrooms and spreading formative assessments throughout schools. The cost is not to exceed $152,400. This is funded by grant funds. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item? I just want to remind everyone regarding the presentation that we had last week, that an assessment, a formative assessment, is not necessarily a test. I think there, Dr. Decker is probably better to speak to that than I am with her knowledge. But this is kind of when someone's talking to a kindergartner about their colors or things like that, where a teacher's just getting a feel for where kids are, and there's best practices in the way to do that. And that's what this does, is help that. But it's not some kind of, you know, everything that says assessment is not necessarily what you think of as sitting down and filling out bubbles. And that's important to remember in the whole scheme of the kind of over-testing regime. Do you have any questions or anything to add to that? We have a motion. Okay, Ms. Faith, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. F3 is a recommendation to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Holland Hall School, Tulsa, to provide district students with independent study opportunities through Holland Hall's externship opportunity, Tulsa Term, during the spring semester of the 2018-2019 school year. There's no cost to the district, and I'll read the rationale here. Holland Hall has created a non-secular, off-campus semester-long experiential learning experience called Tulsa Term. Tulsa Term will provide rich and full school-day learning opportunities in which students gain firsthand experience identifying problems, creating solutions, and making a difference in their community. This memorandum of understanding allows Holland Hall School and Tulsa Public Schools to work together to provide six district high school students and six Holland Hall high school students' participation in the Tulsa Term externship program. I know there are some questions regarding this. If we can get a motion, we'll enter into discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
Move/approve.
Second. Ms. Marshall?
In our last meeting, it was stated that this item was that the students were selected from Tulsa Beyond. Now, it's my understanding that McLean is a part of that program. And I am having trouble understanding why McLean is not a part of this program. And I'm told to wait, that McLean will be considered next time that we're doing things next time. And it seems like McLean is always a next time, you know? We may as well make McLean and the McLean Theater Patterns theme song the theme song from Annie, Tomorrow. The sun will come out for that pattern tomorrow. Because they're never getting anything. They're never getting any of the advantages of what is good for it, what is good for the pattern, what is good for enhancements. And it's just not a good look. I don't understand why those students weren't considered. At first, I was told because no one applied. Now I'm being told tonight because no one met the qualifications. Earlier in the week, I was told, oh, yes, there were two students that met the qualifications. They were bright there. GPAs met the qualifications for this program. So I don't know, maybe somebody can tell me what the actual qualifications were and what the real story is behind it. Because I'm getting mixed messages about this. And it just seems like I'm being put in a whirlwind of, let's make up something to make the board member happy.
Would you like me to?
Yes, I will.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you, first of all, Board Member Marshall. The first thing I want to say is that I share your concern about the fact that we had six positions in this pilot program. We have not only not a representative from, of our schools in the program, we have two schools that were not represented. We certainly would love to have had students from all of the schools represented. And I think that you and I, when we talked about this earlier in the week, had, or last week, had a good conversation about the fact that we should have, as a district, and school leadership and school counseling staff should have done a better job of making sure that individual students were aware of the opportunity and had a completed application that was submitted. So I agree with that concern. What I can say is that it was not just the Tulsa Beyond schools that had an opportunity to apply. Every single high school leadership received the information. And so this was actually a program that was open to every single high school student in the district. There were only six slots that were available for the pilot year. I share your disappointment that not one of those slots was filled by a McLean High School student. But given that it is a pilot year, we certainly look forward to future opportunities. I will say that there are many great things that we've launched at McLean, including the fact that McLean High School is one of only four high schools that are part of Tulsa Beyond project as an overall project.
Ms. Marshall?
You know, again, at the last meeting.
in this pilot program. We have not only not a representative from, of our, of our schools in the, in the program, we have two schools that were not represented. We, we certainly would love to have had students from all of the schools represented and I, I think that you and I, when we talked about this earlier in the week, had a, or last week, had a good conversation about the fact that we should have as a district and school leadership and school counseling staff should have done a better job of making sure that individual students were aware of the opportunity and, and had a completed application that was submitted. So I agree with that concern. What I can say is that it was not just the Tulsa Beyond schools that had an opportunity to apply. Every single high school leadership received the information and so this was actually a program that was open to every single high school student in the district. There were only six slots that were available for the pilot year. I share your disappointment that not one of those slots was filled by a McLean High School student, but given that it is a pilot year, we certainly look forward to future opportunities. I will say that there are many great things that we've launched at McLean, including the fact that McLean High School is one of only four high schools that are part of Tulsa Beyond project as a, as a, an overall project. Ms. Marshall?
You know, again, at the last meeting, what was said was that the students were selected from Tulsa Beyond. So I think that we need to get our information correct before we come into the board meeting and it's disseminated out to the board members as well as the public because that's what, that's what the information was here at the board meeting.
That's actually correct. So let me just be clear because I know we have been a little unclear about this. This program was open to all students. That information was shared because it was so completely new, we, there was not, we were not getting a response, a significant response from the city and so we asked the team in the design lab to take this on and to focus on the four schools that includes McLean High School who are part of Tulsa Beyond, to get students to participate because there's such a strong connection between the opportunity to be a part of such an unusual high school experience and the work that we're seeking to have happen through the redesign of, of secondary learning that's happening with the Tulsa Beyond schools. So it is correct that we focused on the Tulsa Beyond schools. That's right. And, and the students who were selected are all from schools that are participating in Tulsa Beyond.
And I want to also go on record here today. McLean High School has a history of not disseminating information to the students through its counseling department, through its leadership, as far as scholarships, as far as information, programmatic information. It has a history of that. So I don't want any student left behind and I don't want any missed opportunities for those students. So I want to go on record here publicly before you and the public and, and all my colleagues here, that I want to ensure that the information is disseminated to those students by whatever means necessary, that those students receive every opportunity to participate in all programs that's going to enhance their educational value, that they can go on and be productive students and move on academically to higher heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Thank you, Ms. Marshall. With that, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Wester?
Aye.
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 Aye. Move on to item F4, post-factum approval to amend item E175 of the June 18, 2018 agenda to increase the cost to purchase two tracts of land adjacent to East Central High School for construction of a parking lot for the new field house. The cost increase is $3,760.95. I'll entertain a motion to approve item F4.
Move/approve.
Second.
Any questions regarding item F4? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
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 Aye. That brings us to our information agenda and Dr. Gist will present this portion of the meeting. Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, and, and everyone who's joining us here. As a reminder, unlike the items we just reviewed, information items are just for discussion. They will not be acted upon tonight and will only be acted upon if they come back on an agenda item as either a consent agenda item or an action agenda item at a future meeting. Items G1 through G4 will be presented by our Deputy Superintendent, Paula Shannon. Ms. Shannon?
Thank you, Dr. Gist, members of the Board. I am supporting my colleague, Chief Fletcher, this evening. Item G1 is a recommendation to amend the contract with TNTP that you approved on June 18, 2018 to add support for the development of a four-year novice teacher set of trainings and development and aligning the coaching model to support the growth and development of all of our teachers. This is an increase to the contract of $118,508. Just as a quick reminder, our initial scope of work with TNTP focused on continuing to build the trainings and aligning us on our instructional quality review so that we understand the quality of instruction happening in our classrooms, that we're building the capacity of our teaching and learning team, our instructional leadership directors, and our principals to support teachers in, in implementing best practices and also thinking about how we're making, providing our teachers with guidance is the best way to put it, on the instructional resources we have so that they can implement those best practices. As we learned this summer with increased supports to novice teachers as well as experienced teachers who were entering the district for the first time and continued feedback we received from our school leaders and our instructional leadership directors with the diversity of our teaching force and what some of our career teachers need help with, we knew that we needed to continuously improve that model. We needed some technical assistance to do that and so the extension of the contract does focus on shoring up the kinds of supports we're providing, understanding over the next four years what we need to be targeting with our evolving teaching force and aligning the coaching model to support that, as well as continuing to train our instructional mentors to be prepared. I'll pause for any questions you might have.
Mr. Percival?
Which grant is funding this?
This is, this is coming out of support from the Foundation for Tulsa Schools.
Other questions? President Schreiber?
Dr. Decker?
Just one clarifying question. Is this coaching supported on social-emotional development and classroom management?
We integrate all of those things. So that's part of the, the building out the four-year training plan to understand when our teachers enter, what do we need to focus on for a person brand-new to teaching who may have not gone through a traditional training program, to the teacher who has quite a bit of experience with classroom management and needs more support on building social-emotional, or integrating social-emotional skills into the classroom, to a teacher who needs improved pedagogical skills.
So, and, and correct me because I, I wasn't here when the first contract was presented. So this, the first contract was already for four years?
No, it's for one year.
Okay, so this is just an extension of that one. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And just we, we can only approve contracts year-to-year.
Perfect. Thank you.
By the Oklahoma Constitution. Isn't that correct, Ms. Burke?
It's a very detailed constitution. It has the flammability point of kerosene in it, so.
Except the superintendent's contract.
That is correct.
Any other questions on this item? Go ahead, Dr. Gist.
I'll, I'll continue. The next items are under talent management. Item G2 is a recommendation to enter into an agreement with Missouri State, Missouri Southern State University, setting forth the terms under which they'll place student interns, student social workers with current district personnel within the district for purposes of fulfilling certification preparation requirements during this academic year. We, this is a routine item. We do this frequently. We have individuals who have certification programs that they take online or through a distance learning format, or in some cases continue to travel to these places because they may have started a program there. So I'll pause for any questions here.
So the, this university is this for online students?
I don't have the exact details. It's because we have an individual who is specializing in social work, I believe, who is getting their certification through this university. So we're partnering with them to support that individual with the specialized training that they need. We work with a variety of different universities and so some of them, the individuals are traveling to the university, so it's kind of a traditional setting. Some of them are using distance learning or it might be an online platform.
And sometimes they've completed their program, but they've then moved to Tulsa so they're doing their practicum or their experience, but they've completed all their coursework. So I, like, like Ms. Shannon said, it's a variety of scenarios.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall?
Is someone here supervising them?
So the, the university in which the, the students are getting their degree, the university that is overseeing their certification has a program in place that includes their point of contact who then communicates with their cooperating teacher who is going, or cooperating, you know, if it's a different kind of a position.
Administrator.
And so that, then their school and the person who's responsible for that student's program will then be in touch with the person assigned to be sort of the mentor for that professional. Typically, it's a, in most of our cases in our district, it's a cooperating teacher who's serving as a mentor teacher for what we, what we typically call student Ms. Wester?
So correct me if I'm wrong. So the person that would be overseeing them would have to be, would have to be a licensed social worker?
Mm-hmm.
That's local.
Yes. It, it works no differently than if we're working with a local university. We're just working to support the specialization of our workforce based upon what people are receiving their certification in and the personnel that we need.
Ms. Marshall, did that answer your question?
So is this person working in our district as a licensed social worker or a teacher?
When someone is going through a certification program, they have a required practicum of sorts. So they're either doing a student teaching and most, most, most of us are familiar because we've had a student teacher when we were a student. We're familiar with that. The same thing happens for other kinds of positions. So what they're doing is they're working alongside someone who is already credentialed in that field and they are observing, they are getting a chance to do some of the, the work, but only under the supervision of the person who is certified in, in the field. So when you're a student teacher, for example, you're in the classroom, you're doing some teaching, but you're doing it with the support of the teacher who's in the classroom.
And in this case, my understanding is for this particular university, the student interns are social workers. I know that Chief Fletcher can answer more detailed questions in the Talent Management Committee where I know some of these things, all of, all of these have been discussed over time as well. So we bring this forward frequently.
Other questions on this item? Let's move on.
Go ahead.
What routine creates and deletes is item G4? G3?
Oh, sorry.
Is to enter into a memorandum of understanding to confirm partnership between TNTP's Tulsa Teacher Corps. So it's the affiliated program that we're working on with TNTP through the federal seed grant that we received. This is a really awesome opportunity in that it provides the, the Tulsa Teacher Corps members with the opportunity to apply for an AmeriCorps stipend, if you will. They can use the $5,920 to apply towards future educational opportunities or to pay off educational loans, for example. So it's just a benefit to our Tulsa Teacher Corps members for being part of this program. This is solidifying our relationship with TNTP. TNTP does provide the AmeriCorps benefit.
Questions on this item?
G4. And then finally, G4, our routine creates, deletes. Happy to answer any questions on, on these. They are for positions on the talent management, student and family support services, and academics team. I could discuss a few of the positions that have been highlighted in the Talent Management Committee discussions led by Chief Fletcher. There are four total positions related to talent management on this agenda, which include one manager of outreach and cultivation and three talent managed strategists. Each of these roles play a unique position to help the district better support and serve our schools in meeting their talent needs. The positions that are on the student and family support services team are new positions and are funded through Title IV. Title IV, much like Title I and Title II, a federal grant. This particularly focuses on supporting improved safety, belonging, and engagement of students. So those positions are directly focused on those areas. Again, they're funded through Title IV. And then the academic position, we worked and at this point have an executive director of early childhood. We have an opportunity through grant funding to provide additional positions for that team. The roles focus on ensuring a strong foundational support, a start for our students, starting in pre-kindergarten and ensuring readiness for kindergarten through third grade. The roles will play a part in developing and building a blueprint for more aligned and coherent early childhood programming, partnering to build leader and teacher capacity in early childhood, and continuing to build a strong community campaign regarding the importance of students participating in early childhood programs. And we've, are working, now that we have our executive director of early childhood hired, to build that team out. These are grant-funded positions.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Items G5 through G9 will be presented by our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Roberto Delgadoio. Mr. Delgadoio?
Good evening, Dr. Gist and members of the Board. Item G5 is a recommendation to increase OME Corp. LLC maintenance agreement for our Postus machines. It's an increase of $374.95 and the rationale there is to provide regular maintenance and repairs. Item G6 is a recommendation to join the inter-local purchasing system, otherwise known as TIPS. And TIPS is a cooperative whose membership will give the district the opportunity to benchmark prices and even more importantly, to leverage volume buying. Item G7 is an increase to the RICH and Cartmill Agreement approved, that's item E211 of the June 2018 agenda item. And the rationale here is to increase by an additional $2,000. So that Tulsa Public Schools will gain an additional $1 million of liability coverage, which is specifically to help us in the cases when we're traveling outside of Oklahoma. Item G8, and please stop me if there are any questions. President Schreiber, move her mic. So I thought, hold on. Item G8 is a recommend, it's a routine item to approve sanctioning the following booster clubs. Several PTAs, PTOs, and PTSAs along with several booster clubs, which the rationale is that helps sanction these organizations, excuse me. The sanctioned status provides these organizations with exemptions from Oklahoma School Code statutory controls relating to school activity funds. And item G9 is to approve issuing the warrants to Tulsa County, Osage County, Creek County, and Wagoner County for the district share of the visual inspection cost for the 2018-2019 school year. For Tulsa County, warrant would be for $634,978.92. For Osage County, $69,193.84. Creek County, $9,677.36. And then Wagoner County, $202.99. And these are routine items. It's required for the district to pay these visual inspection fees to the respective counties.
Mr. Percival?
President Schreiber, would it be possible to know after, before we have to act on this, what, so we see the percentage of increase in the cost to the district for these visual inspections. inspections. I'm kind of wondering, what's the increase in the receipt of AdVORM tax funds that go along with these costs? I know we have to pay them regardless, but it would be nice to just have a better understanding about how AdVORM is moving along and increasing along with the cost to do the visual inspections.
I see Mr. Delgadoio nodding his head.
Absolutely. That data is definitely available, totally put it together. I mean, for perspective, to give you a sense for this current year, we are estimating about $110 million in what we would call funding for the general fund and building fund. And then about another $75 million for the SNC fund. So in order for us to pay our bond, expenditure, a total of about $185, $90 million is coming in. It's this year, but I can totally put the information together to get a sense of how the trend looks across the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delgadoio, and thank you, Mr. Percival, for that inquiry. Items G10 through G12 will be presented by our executive director of bond projects, Mr. Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens?
Mr. Hudgens, before you present these items, I just want to give Mr. Huff Heinz an opportunity to speak. He has signed up to speak to items G12 and then G13, which crosses over into the next group, but I know he'll, I want to just go ahead and give him his opportunity now.
Thank you. Peace, yes, peace. Greetings to our Honorable Superintendent Dr. Gist, our Madam President Suzanne Schreiber, and each of our honorable Tulsa Public School Board members and honorable staff and team. We're grateful for all the teachers and citizens of this great city, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a joy to be with you on this fifth day of November in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ 2018. Yes. G12, recommendation, approve supplement number 12 with Crossland Construction Company Incorporated, Tulsa, for construction of the new EduCare4 facility adjacent to Celia Clinton Elementary School. Cost, approximately $12,000, excuse me, $12,500,000. Celia Clinton Elementary is packed with potential. Seems TPS history page tells us Celia Clinton School was donated to the city of Tulsa in the late 1800s. This school was named for Celia Louise Clinton and was donated by her parents, who were founding members of the Boston Avenue Methodist Church. According to yesterday's November 4th Order of Worship, we can see that this great church still recognizes Jesus as the Son of God, is God, manifested in the flesh and is Savior of the world. Yes. Yes, Clinton Elementary is packed with potential, which could well be loose by EduCare4. G13, recommendation, approve the schedule of regular meeting dates of the Board of Education for the 2019 calendar year. On this calendar year, some of what we have is routine field trips. Washington High School was named after Booker T. Washington, who wrote in his biography, Up from Slavery, that his teacher taught him to use and love the Bible. I'm grateful for godly teachers. Well, Washington High is to compete in Arkansas, in the Arkansas Model United Nations Conference, Conway, Arkansas, November 16th and 17th, 2018. In their competition, may they be a shining light and set the example for the actual UM to honor the great nation of Israel and its forever capital, Jerusalem. On another note, it is beautiful to see this harmony between the staff and the parents in order to make these trips successful. This trip, no cost to the district. Zero International Elementary School, third graders, study trip to Crystal Bridges Museum, Bentonville, Arkansas. We can read on Zero's website, for more than a decade, families have enrolled their children in Zero International School with a long-term goal in mind, producing a bilingual, biliterate, and a global citizen child in six years. I'm appreciating the idea of being global conscious, for God did so love the world and does love the world, loves the world. May we continue to have a strong USA homeland and honor the nations of the earth and their borders and ours. One day, Jesus Christ will come back, set government in order, and will lovingly govern the earth. This Zero International Elementary School field trip, no cost to the district. Thank you, TPS president, board, teachers, and team for serving our children with love, sweat, and possibly tears, tears of compassion. Thank you, President Schreiber, for your excellent leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens.
Thank you, President Schreiber, Dr. Gist, and board members. Item G10 is a correction from a previous Agenda Item. On October 8th, there was a contractor listed incorrectly. Items G11 is to approve the sale of the land on the north bus lot. City of Tulsa is making some improvements. They're replacing a sanitary lift station, and they needed additional easements. This is on our north bus lot, and they're paying $250,000 for this parcel of land. Item G12 is to hire the construction manager, Crossland Construction, for the construction of the new EduCare4 at Celia Clinton Elementary adjacent to it. Are there any questions on those items? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens. We'll move on to Item G13. Item G13 recommends approval of the schedule of regular meeting dates for the Board of Education for the 2019 calendar year. Oklahoma law requires that the schedule of regular meetings of the Board be on file with a Tulsa County clerk by December 15th of the year prior, so this December 15th. We've worked on this to make sure that we avoided any holidays and other kinds of days. And so you'll see, these dates are listed on the back page of the Agenda, and you'll see in some instances, the meeting is on a Tuesday rather than a Monday, if the Monday is a holiday or a non-school day. I do also want to point out two other months in which the Board meeting is not, it's on its typical day. In order to keep the meetings on Mondays as frequently as possible, as well as to make sure that we avoided a situation that we've had in the past, where we'll have a meeting two weeks in a row and then not have a meeting for three weeks, because we're working around spring break, you'll see that in the months of March and the month of April, the meeting is on a Monday, but it's on, in those two months, it's on the second and fourth Monday, rather than on the first and third Monday. And that then gets us back in track in terms of having every other week as the meeting and prevents us from needing to have an oddly scheduled meeting around spring break. So that is, anything else about that, Madam President?
I would just say, we talked about this a lot in leadership, because it is important to try to keep that regularity. But we felt like this was, in respecting the times that we had off, but also trying to really keep the meetings at a regular pace. We moved these two dates, and so I'm just hopeful that we'll use our social media and our Facebook, and the board members will really internalize this to share, so that we can get the participation, people watching live and people attending the meeting on the right days when these are on the off, not typical first and third Mondays. So just encourage everyone here, that's particularly all of you that are here this evening or that are regulars, to share that, so that we can always have participation and people aware of the meetings and looking for the agendas and speaking on it.
Mr. Percival?
Yeah, could you give me a special reminder? Please? I want to be here for those meetings.
Yes. We can.
Absolutely. I have a feeling we'll be talking about them a lot leading up, because we want to make sure everyone's aware. Thank you. Item G14 calls for a motion discussion and vote on a motion to adopt a resolution whereby the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education opposes the proposed rule change to public charge. And Madam President, I know that you have some remarks you'd like to share about this item.
Sure. We have some speakers on this item, but I, first I want to kind of introduce it, and then I'll read the resolution. As many of you know, the current presidential administration is moving ahead with a change to legal immigration policies that would block lawfully present immigrants from obtaining legal permanent residency, i.e. green card, if they participated in a broad range of social services. So SNAP, which is our nutrition program, prescription medication that are Medicare D, Medicaid, housing assistance, anything like that. And so this policy is referred to as a, as public charge. Under the proposed change to the rule, which was released on October 10th, the public charge policy would be expanded to include participation in basic programs. And our district is 77% economically disadvantaged, and this policy change could have a pretty significant adverse impact on the large majorities of the families that we serve. Families could lose their nutritional benefits under SNAP and their free and reduced lunch meals, because they're out of fear of jeopardizing their citizenship. I know we've already heard a story of someone saying that they're enrolled in Sooner Care, they're waiting on their citizenship papers, and should they get out of Sooner Care so that they can get their citizenship? That's an actual anecdote. So just really deterring eligible immigrant families from these services, seeking housing, homelessness benefits, and just kind of a cascading effect that, you know, can lead to housing instability in our city. We have a terrible eviction rate already here, and it's, unfortunately, we're kind of at the top of that in the country. You know, increase our problems with student absenteeism. It's just, it's not something that we see as a positive for our students. So we want to stand up for these families, and that's why we've come together with this resolution. And I will read it now, and then it will be on for a vote at the next meeting, which will allow everyone out there tonight to, you know, weigh in, comment, and kind of let us know your feelings as well. This is the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education Resolution in opposition to the proposed rule change to public charge. Whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education states that it's, that it is the right of every child, regardless of immigration status, to access a free public K-12 education, and the district welcomes and supports all students. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that approximately 22% of our students are English language learners, and 35% of our students have a language other than English spoken in their home. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education honors and celebrates our diversity by working to be culturally responsive educators and building a culture of inclusion and acceptance. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education shares the responsibility to interrupt educational inequities, so that social and cultural factors such as race and language are no longer predictors of student success. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that the proposed rule change USCIS 2010-0012-001, better known as the public charge, could affect an individual's ability to gain citizenship if they have utilized the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, Medicaid, Medicare D, and housing assistance. And whereas the Tulsa Public School Board of Education knows that many of our families rely on the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program for their nutrition, housing assistance for a safe environment, and Medicaid for their health and well-being. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education understands that the proposed rule would create more fear amongst our families, potentially causing them to forego these essential benefits, which will affect our students' ability to attain a proper education. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education has a vested interest to ensure that all our families have the resources they need to our students to be successful. And whereas the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education knows that because of the rule change, our students will be at a greater risk of poor health outcomes, increased food insecurity, and increased rates of housing instability. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education strongly opposes the proposed rule announced by the US Department of Homeland Security on October 10th, 2018. And therefore, let it be resolved that the Tulsa Public Schools Board of Education will be submitting public comment on behalf of the Tulsa Public Schools during the 60-day public comment period to implore the agency to remove the proposed rule change. One thing that I think is missing and that we should have before we vote on this is the opportunity to offer our parents, students, constituents, and everyone that's a part of the community a place to go if they want to make comment as well, and how they do that. I don't have that information at this time. It's possible one of our speakers will speak to that, but we don't want to just make the resolution, we want to make sure that we actually go on and comment as, and post this resolution as a piece of the comment, but then individuals as well. So with that, this does bring me to tears, but I also got something in my eye while I was reading that. I'll call our first speaker, Mr. Chris Bernard.
Thank you, President Schreiber, and board members, Dr. Gist. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for putting this resolution up. It's something that's very important, and in my line of work as Executive Director of Hunger Free Oklahoma, we've been seeing the impact of even the talk of this rule for the past year. There have been 10 different versions of this rule that have been leaked over the course of the year, all of which we have seen cause drops in participation in the federal nutrition programs, including WIC for pregnant mothers and mothers with infants, SNAP, free and reduced lunch, summer meals. During the teacher walkout, we saw a lot of struggles in the Kendall Whittier neighborhood in particular, convincing families they were safe to send their children to these programs, not only because of a fear of raids, but because of a fear that it would somehow be counted against them when they went to seek their citizenship, despite the fact that their children are citizens for the most part. We know that this rule has the potential of impacting close to 240,000 individuals living in Oklahoma, and that's not including their citizen family members. Quite a few of those, almost half, are children. We've talked to your staff, staff in other districts, who have told us about parents coming to them at forums, confused about whether their children even can participate in free and reduced lunch, or whether that will be held against them. The rule itself, as proposed by the administration, has a section, page 369, that talks about the impacts. And President Schreiber pretty much covered all the information pretty well, but the folks who designed the rule admit that it will lead to more communicable diseases because they'll be foregoing vaccines, more uncompensated care in the community, lower educational outcomes for individuals, more obesity and malnutrition amongst children and women in particular. And all of these are in the name of perhaps saving some money, if it works out, and going towards a merit-based immigration system. What we know about most of these families is that most of them have been working for a long time. For many of these benefits, you are not eligible when you first come to the country. You have to have been here for a significant amount of time, gotten your Social Security number to work, and then if your family is struggling, you may need these benefits and rely on them for some point of time. The public comment is crucial, so to provide you that information now. Because this is an administrative rule, all you get is 60 days to comment, and the administration has to read each comment and then make a decision about what to implement. A group of us, including OK Policy Institute, Tulsa Metropolitan Ministry, Restored Hope, Hunger Free Oklahoma, and many others, including both food banks in Oklahoma, formed a coalition called the Coalition for the Future of Oklahoma Families. The website, we've created a widget where you can go to our website and comment directly from there, is protectokafamilies.org, and we're happy to send that on to the secretary so it can be added to the resolution. It's crucial that the comments be personal, to your views and your concerns, because any comment that is the same in verbiage to another one will not count. Each one has to be individual. The reason these are so crucial is because they serve as evidence for lawyers to do litigation. And that's really how you stop these rules, because it's not a legislative process, because you can't influence those who may be taking a vote on it. This is your only way to make your voice heard and potentially stop something that would not only damage families and students in your district, it's going to impact bottom lines in a lot of ways. So SNAP participation is where you get your direct certification rate. Your direct certification rate is what allows you to use Your direct certification rate is what allows you to use the community eligibility provision to feed all of your elementary students for free. When you see SNAP participation go down, you will see that rate go down, and it will no longer make sense for your district to do that. If you can't do that, and these families pull out of free and reduced lunch, you're going to see struggling students who can't concentrate. That's going to be a bigger burden on your resources, your social workers and teachers, and your community partners who are serving in your school to try and support these kids. It's going to put a bigger burden on our charitable community that really can't fill the gap. We often use a stat that 94% of food assistance is federal resources in our state, 6% is charitable. They can't cover this gap, and they won't be able to. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Carlie Putnam.
Hello. Thank you for hearing. There's a whole group on this issue, so thank you, Board President Schreiber, Superintendent Gist, and the board for hearing this. My name is Carlie Putnam. I serve as Policy Director at Oklahoma Policy Institute. I also do our healthcare research. And so I'll be talking about this primarily from a healthcare perspective. OK Policy is one of the founding members of the Coalition for the Future of Oklahoma Families because we believe that no family should be forced to sacrifice their immigration status for medical care. Families should not be punished for accepting help when they need it, no matter where they're from. This rule, this proposed rule, is highly technical, and it leaves a lot of gaps for questions. The Children's Health Insurance Program, or CHIP, may or may not be included. It's unclear in the rule. We know that some programs will be exempt, like Medicaid reimbursable services in schools and emergency Medicaid. I have been a professional healthcare nerd for going on five years now, and if there is one thing I know, it is that no one really understands under what program they qualified for Medicaid. Providers often don't understand under what program they're qualified for Medicaid. I have talked to parents of children with significant disabilities who did not get the services their children needed for a decade later because one person told them one piece of inaccurate information, and they just stopped looking. So all it takes is one wrong or inaccurate statement. So if healthcare is complicated, immigration law is also incredibly complicated. And when you put the two together, my fear is that there is a real likelihood that fear and misinformation mean that many families and many children don't get the care they need. Whether or not the specifics of this rule would apply to them, there will be a chilling effect where broad swaths of people who fear that this may in some way apply will just cease participating in these programs because they're afraid to lose what they came to this country to get. Over the decades, as changes have come to anti-poverty programs like SNAP and Medicaid, one thing we have seen is that when people leave medical assistance or food assistance because they believe they're not eligible, or because they believe they'll be punished for participating, they don't come back. And so that's kids and families going without the healthcare and the food and the housing that they need. And you all know, you already are serving students who aren't getting the food and the healthcare and the housing that they need, and you know the effects it has on their classrooms and their learning. And this rule will simply magnify those even further. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you'll support the resolution condemning the proposed rule change. And thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank you for this opportunity to speak. As all the board members of the Tulsa Public Schools, you guys have been faced with some amazing challenges, and you've done an amazing job. I can't imagine what it's like to walk in your shoes for a day, to be a governing body that helps dictate the future of my children's education. I have two in Tulsa Public Schools. From budget decisions to name changes, all of this from your very high-paying positions you have on this board. That was sarcastic. You're supposed to laugh. I've never walked in your shoes, but I have to make tough calls and big stands as a minister at a church, as a progressive minister at a church in the Bible Belt. You have to put yourself out there sometimes to show that you care about certain topics too, but in a different way. You have to let those know that are hurting, that they can be counted on, and that that all-encompassing love of the divine loves them too, despite what humanity might say. I understand making hard calls on staff and procedures and sometimes smaller issues that may seem small to some, but life-changing to others. During these last couple of weeks, I got to step into shoes of people outside of my comfort zone. Last Tuesday, I was out in Benaamuna with nearly 1,000 other people as we mourn the loss of 11 lives in a synagogue in Pittsburgh. Later, I changed shoes again to attend a Muslim-led fall festival from Muslims for Mercy and had some of the best damn chili I've ever had. And in my master's program of social arts at Phillips Seminary, I'm learning so much about changing my shoes and learning about other cultures and practices. I really feel like one of the luckiest men alive, which I guess I am, because I've always been white, I've always been middle-class, I've always had privilege based on that. I've never lived in one of those scary neighborhoods that my mom used to tell us to roll the windows up and lock the doors. I've never felt the pain of being hungry, obviously. I've never felt the color of my skin was going to be a deciding factor in my school life, or buying a car, or renting an apartment. I've never been able to not communicate with my teachers, or doctors, or even police because of a language barrier. I've never felt that because I'm a man, and I won't get overlooked for that promotion at work, or be treated like an idiot at car dealerships. Have you ever felt these things? In the Hebrew texts, the Jewish people were taught to not mistreat the foreigner because they were once foreigners in Egypt. The Quran teaches that to not be harsh to the orphan, nor chide those who ask for help because they talk about the blessings of your Lord. And in our New Testament, it tells us to not forget to show hospitality to strangers as we may be entertaining angels. Now, after hearing that, I will tell you one of my hardest faith issues, the one I have to overcome, is choosing empathy over sympathy. Sympathy guided me for years, saying, "Oh, poor you," or "Oh, that just stinks," or "Well, I'm sad for them," which almost sounds racist these days. It wasn't until I became a full-time progressive minister that I stepped into the act of empathy over sympathy, and sometimes literally removing my shoes to give to a homeless man who had none. But today, I'm asking you to do that too. I'm asking you, as a governing board, to make a unanimous and public stance on this upcoming proposed changes to the public charge. I'm asking you to choose empathy over sympathy and put on and try to walk in the shoes of an immigrant who's trying to find a better life for their family, for themselves, by doing all they can to become a U.S. citizen. Imagine the fear of living in a drug cartel running your neighborhood. Imagine the only school option for your child is next to a garbage dump. Imagine the shoes of a little girl or little boy who have to walk miles for basic education, medicine, food, or water. Now imagine being the shoes of the adult, the parent, doing all the right things, doing all the right paperwork, scrimping and digging and finding every last dime. I'm asking you to change your shoes. I'm asking you to change your shoes. When it comes down to it, Micah 6:8 is what speaks to me. Do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly. I wonder what God's shoes look like after walking with humanity all these thousands of years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last speaker on this topic is Ivan Gutierrez Reyes, and I'm not sure if I pronounced the first part right.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak, letting us speak on this resolution. My name is Ivan Gutierrez. I'm originally from Mexico. I came to Tulsa when I was 14. I attended Whitney Middle School back then and graduated from Ethan Hill High School. I now have a sister who's 12 years old, and is a U.S. citizen, and attended Tulsa Public Schools. I work in early childhood education. I started as an interpreter at one of the schools where I work, and I work in our Disabilities Department connecting families with the resources that they need. And so as a member of an immigrant family and as someone who continues to work with immigrant families every day, I am personally concerned because our community and my family in particular has seen this kind of political hostility towards us before, and where there's a lot of information out there that it's misunderstood or simply not properly passed along. And so that creates a lot of uncertainty in our immigrant families. I know that there's been a time in around '08 when a bill, HB 1804, passed here in Oklahoma where a lot of immigrant families fled for fear of being separated from their families. And so this proposed rule, it's very broad, and it brings a lot of uncertainty to the families who are listening, hearing, and reading about this. I personally, for example, I am engaged and will be married next year. My partner is a U.S. citizen, so I plan on eventually obtaining a green card and eventually being able to obtain citizenship. But I know wonderful people who know a lot about these issues, who keep me informed. And even then, because of how broad this is, I'm still feeling uncertain about my potential application to obtain a green card, because I'm not sure if I'll be able to with this proposed rule. And so being that I feel like I'm bilingual, I've been here for over 20 years, and I understand the system to an extent, like I'm still afraid and skeptical about what's been presented. So I cannot imagine some of our families, my family included, as to what they're reading and hearing, and not being able to accept help that they need and that they have a right to because a lot of their children are U.S. citizens. And so I've seen from things like not accepting reduced lunch, or not being able to apply, or not being able but not wanting to apply simply because they're afraid of their immigration status and that they will be punished for it, to more serious things. And so I hope that you take all these families into consideration when thinking of voting, and I hope that you support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members? No questions? I want to thank the Coalition to Protect Oklahoma Families for coming together so quickly and organizing, and really making Tulsans aware of this issue and affording them the opportunity to be engaged and weigh in. Just kind of shows Tulsa's compassion, excuse me. Oh, Mr. Percival.
So are we gonna, will we be able to get some information about how we can submit individual comments? Would that be helpful? I remember Mr. Bernard mentioned a widget and some of that.
Yes, definitely. We'll distribute that among the board, and we'll update this draft resolution to include the website that was mentioned that also has the widget on it, and potentially directly how to just directly go and comment as well. And then hopefully, we'll be able to share that out, that we're doing that, and people can voluntarily engage in that if they would like to as well.
Through our social media channels, things like that, we can distribute that information?
I would assume that we can. Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Schreiber.
Yes.
I don't know if this question or comment, but one, thank you for bringing this up. Second, if it's possible, at all possible, I think it would make a huge difference if this is passed, if it is in Spanish, so that the families that this affects the most would feel as appreciative as I am right now.
Of course, and maybe when we vote on it, I can read it in English, you can read it in Spanish, and then we can put an available version in Spanish on the web and anywhere we share it, and share them dual. Yes, thank you so much. Dr. Gist, do you have any staff reports this evening?
We do, Madam President. As you know, and as so many Tulsans are aware, our teaching and learning team has been working on a new tool that helps us to clearly identify strengths and areas of growth for our students and to more effectively convey our students' abilities and areas for families to pay attention to. And so we did distribute the new report card for grades 1 through 5, and we sent that home last week. And so we wanted to have tonight Martin Green with us. He's our Director of Academic Services and Impact to talk about briefly the overview of the new report card. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, board members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to represent our team in speaking about what I think is some exciting work around report cards at Tulsa Public Schools. So why did we decide to redesign grades 1 through 5 report cards? Last year's lengthy report card, as you can see up on the screen here, presented some challenges to teachers and communicating to families about where students are in their learning and what next steps to take. It was also difficult to digest for many families and for many students. Seeing as we know that report cards are a really important opportunity for our educators and our district to communicate with families about student progress, with that in mind, we wanted to focus on providing a more digestible, user-friendly report card for students and families, provide our educators with a better platform to help move student learning forward in partnership with families, and help lay the groundwork for a longer-term vision for grading and report cards in Tulsa. And we wanted to do all of this without creating much additional work for teachers. So what was our redesign process? So our first step was discovery. So our team went out and spoke with over 40 families and teachers. In order to better understand their experience with report cards to date, what they would like to see in the future, our team then used that feedback to inform initial redesign efforts, tested our prototypes with our users, and then refined based on additional feedback. This process allowed us to move quickly to a solution while also ensuring that our primary end-users, families and teachers, were front and center in both authoring and pressure testing our solutions. One of the bright spots of this work, in my mind, is that we have, we've had parents, teachers, school leaders, and district staff across departments at the same table on a regular basis, problem-solving together in order to get to stronger solutions, in this case with the report cards. We're also really grateful for input from our board's Teaching and Learning Committee, CTA, Tulsa County PTSA, at various stages in the process. So what did we learn during the redesign process from our primary users, teachers, and families? Teachers told us they need to continue to build their familiarity on how to grade based on our standards or Tulsa learning expectations. They also said that they would like to see more visually appealing representations of student data on report cards to help drive more impactful conversations with students and families. Families wanted simpler, more digestible report cards. They wanted to know how their students are conducting themselves in school, while also understanding how students are performing relative to their peers. So this year's grades 1 through 5 report card was essentially one page front and back, and is accompanied by an Understanding Your Report Card Guide for parents and a simplified supplement of student performance on learning expectations or standards. We worked with our Language and Cultural Services team to ensure all report card documents are available in English and Spanish. While grades 1 through 5 report cards are generated from our data dashboard, parents are still able to access Power School to see additional details on their students' grades, as has been the case in the past. So this up here is the main report card document. So it's one page front and back with comments that came as a result of our design efforts. Up here, at least, you'll see it's in color. So all of these are printed in color. So all of these are printed in color. Has a very different look and feel thanks to our data dashboard and some really strong work from our data and IT teams. Other key changes are that the percentage and letter grades are standalone every quarter. So families and students have a clear understanding of student performance for each marking period. Last year it was cumulative. So this is a second grade student you see up here, so you'll see grades of E or excellent, whereas third, fourth, and fifth grade students, you'd see the A through F scale that you're more familiar with. Couple other notes, you'll see the addition of attendance data at the top, which is color-coded to alert families if students' attendance is dipping below certain thresholds. We know strong attendance is critical foundational component of academic success. You'll also notice that there are NWEA map data charts and tables. This is really useful data for families, students, and teachers that can fuel a productive conversation about where students' knowledge and skills are relative to grade-level peers across the country and what next steps to take as we continue to push for our student growth. So what other information did our families receive? So appended to the front of this is an Understanding Your Report Card document, provides a quick overview for families on how to interpret each section of their student's report card. And then attached to the back is our Tulsa Learning Expectations, which teachers grade according to what's been taught for that particular marking period. We've reduced these to a more digestible number of what we call power standards with the support of our academic coordinators. And again, all of these documents are available in English and Spanish. How do we share these changes? Over the course of the last month, we engaged in a number of communications with teachers, school leaders, families, to provide insights about the changes to grades one through five report cards, opportunities to address questions and incorporate feedback. In the interest of making the change as easy as possible for schools, our team offered up a new service that would allow schools to have the ability to have us generate report cards, print them, distribute them back to the schools, and we're excited that over 80% of our elementary schools took us up on that. Really saved a lot of time. So next steps, we definitely have room to grow, so we're excited to continue to receive feedback and continue to improve. We'll be combining our learnings from our last phase of our work with follow-up interviews with families and educators to continue to make improvements in future quarters. Additionally, we'll begin to lay out a plan for where we want to see learning-focused grading go in the future and what that will mean for our report cards going forward. With that, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, Ms. Wester?
Quick question. First, thank you. This looks great. As a former principal and elementary teacher, thank you. My question is regarding SEL, the SEL part, and about the objectivity of it or subjectivity of it. I know that they put an X, but I don't know if the teacher is actually looking at a scale to be able to meet that.
Yep. We do have reference materials that were provided to teachers that go through the various SEL skills and kind of the breakdown of what each of those means. That said, we know that for this next quarter and going forward, we definitely have opportunities for training in that particular area.
Just a reminder, SEL is social emotional learning.
Thank you.
Other questions? As a mother of a first grader and fourth grader, I received this report card last week, and I definitely can say that it's an improvement. And my first grader, who's used to just seeing S and E and not our percentage, told me that everybody got an 80% in music. So I don't know if that was true or not, but he was definitely advocating for himself and keyed in on that. So I thought that was interesting, but it does give an opportunity to really have a more detailed conversation. You can see that. And also really understand the testing better because even as a member of the school board and a lot of exposure to that, every time the testing comes home and I just, I've asked for tutorials on it, it's hard to sort out. And I think this gives a lot better picture of it for families. So I appreciate all the work and looking forward to seeing continued improvement in it going up to additional grades if I reach your future work.
Yes, that's the plan, is we'll continue to add additional grades to this redesign effort.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff items this evening, Dr. Gist? Do we have any board member reports or concerns this evening? No board member reports or concerns? Okay, I'm gonna make my last pitch for everybody who did not vote early to go and vote tomorrow. I voted on Saturday at the election board, and while I was there, I met a new friend while I was in line. And then when we got inside, there was a first-time voter, meaning someone that had just turned 18 and was voting for their first time, and everyone stopped and cheered, and they rang a bell, and they called it out. And it was just a great moment, and it really made me think about all of our kids and their future and making sure that they're engaged and that they get that opportunity to feel like your whole town's for you, do it. And it wasn't about parties or politics or anything else, it was just about being an American. It was really actually a moving moment and totally surprised me because it was Saturday morning and there was things that, you know, people probably thought they wanted to be doing otherwise, but we were all there together. So make sure you're there tomorrow if you haven't been there already. We have one citizen comment this evening from Mr. Del Bright.
Madam President, President Schreiber, school board members, Dr. Gist, I'm here to talk about the truancy ordinance. I have not received a copy or seen a copy of the letter that was stated in the October 25th Tulsa World, but I certainly agree with your conclusions. Talking about 11,000 of our kiddos, 2011, excuse me, 2017, 2018, were chronically absent. 1.25% chronically absent of African-American children. As we look at that, it's obviously not just enough to identify that number or come up with that number, but what is being done to address it. I think the gentleman here said you have to walk in those children's shoes. We have to know why that is occurring. But the ordinance and the letter that you had submitted, I'm not quite sure to whom, but this ordinance will disproportionately, this is out of your letter according to the Tulsa World, targeted both our economically disadvantaged families and our families of color. The letter states, even with the therapeutic court option, that option is available for those who want to avoid a punitive financial penalty. They could choose that court. But you said, you said it right, that it does open the door for them to be engaged in the criminal system, and it does. I agree with that wholeheartedly. Your letter goes on to say, the request from the city councilors is to put the ordinance on hold and make more time, take more time, with the local school districts, community organizations, and other stakeholders. I think that's absolutely right. Truancy is really a symptom of a larger problem. We have dropout rates, we have suspension rates, we have low graduation rates. All of these are signs and symptoms. I think that Mrs. Gilbert, the Councilor Gilbert, has it wrong. And I would suggest to you, those of you who signed that letter, to come to the council meeting and state your case. Our community needs to see you standing up for those 11,000 and putting forth a more humanitarian approach to this issue, and it should reside with the Tulsa Public Schools and all those other public school districts. You must come out. It's not enough to put it in a letter. Take it from someone who's been coming here 30 years. You must make an appearance there and in no uncertain terms, just as you put it in this letter, state it to the mayor and the councilors. I'll be there. I'll be there. I want to see you there, Schreiber, Dr. Gist, Ms. Decker. You need to stand up and be counted. We also need to be putting forth the same thing that these gentlemen and the young lady talked about in terms of what kiddos need. Immigrants, African-American, Asian, Native American, they got it. We have to, or you have to, build a bridge with them and with the African-American Affairs City of Tulsa Commission, who voted no and saying, no, we will not back Mrs. Gilbert's ordinance change or ordinance. There's a lot of bridges and silos that have to be torn down because these represent human beings, walk in their shoes. Get out there. Get out there. Don't stand behind that podium. We need to see you out in front, excuse me, Wednesday, November 7th, 5 o'clock. Please come. I think your voices are needed and we need to hear from you. We look forward to it. And we have to break down these silos. You cannot resolve this issue on your own. You have to engage the individuals we just talked to. There are commissioners and commissions, Tulsa City Commissions, that can help you out also. But you've got to open it up. You can't become more tight-lipped. You have to be more democratic at this period in time. It's for our children's sake. Those 11,000 are children who have the same issues that they talk about. See you Wednesday, November 7th, 5 o'clock. We need to bring you forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. I'm gonna move to Dr. Gist's reports and presentations for the evening.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few things tonight. I want to start with Tulsa Beyond. As you know, Tulsa Beyond is our high school redesign initiative. We kicked it off with the design teams in September, although we've been working on it for some time. We have four schools working to develop innovative models for secondary learning that will launch in the 2019-2020 school year, which, by the way, is next year. I know that sounds like a long way away, but it is next year. You'll see on the screen the Tulsa Beyond Journey map, and we're about midway through the design leg of the journey. So as you know, we have design teams at four high schools, Webster, Hale, McLean, and Tulsa Learning Academy, and they've been meeting regularly over the last few months to dive deeply into teacher and student and community feedback about the high school experiences in our district. This is extraordinarily challenging work that these teams are going through. We certainly are proud of the work that has happened in our schools with rising graduation rates and other positive indicators, with our teams raising the bar and raising supports to help students achieve. But we know that we are not getting it done. Along with high schools across the country, we need honest feedback about what is happening in high school today and what needs to be different. So tonight, we have a short video that features our design team members sharing their reflections on the work they've done so far and their hopes for the ways in which Tulsa Beyond will transform teaching and learning, not just in Tulsa but beyond. So we'll share this video with you.
This group of people is very passionate about bringing change.
What we're doing right now is broken.
I come from where people just come outside, they get jumped for winning a basketball. And I don't want nobody to have to go through that, not even my worst enemy.
...interviews and people who I've seen like for the last two years, I would never imagine what they go through on a daily basis.
And I've learned that really what's very important is this relationship.
He was being genuine with me, and he started to tear up. And so I told him, excuse me, I told him that I was gonna keep with him no matter what. He always had someone in me.
People don't want to be there because they're bored, they're not challenged, the work's too hard, no one's helping them.
Once they know that you care about them, they're probably gonna care more about what you're trying to offer them in the classroom.
We all need to change somehow.
We have to build value for that student. Make them see a reason to get up every morning, come to us.
We're looking at the future. You know, we really need to shake things up.
So we will certainly continue to bring updates to board members and the public about the work of Tulsa Beyond, but we're excited about the progress that we've made so far. I want to also address tomorrow Civic Engagement Day. As you know, all of our schools in the district will be closed tomorrow. During last year's historic 10-day teacher walkout, President Schreiber and I were in Oklahoma City, meeting with a group of teachers, and one of our teachers, Stephanie Jones, raised the possibility of having our schools closed on Election Day because of the opportunity that we have tomorrow and the challenge that so many of our team members experience with being able to be actively involved on that day. So what we know tomorrow we want to see happening is, of course, everyone getting out to the polls themselves to vote, but also we know that folks are volunteering with organizations or individuals with specific campaigns, working at polling places in a nonpartisan way to just be there to assist those who are coming to vote, and also getting out the vote, helping people who are unable to get to the polls for transportation reasons or otherwise to be able to get there. We also know that our schools are often, including ours, used as polling places. We would love to expand that because schools are a great place to be able to go and vote. But having our schools without students in them on that day will certainly make that a safer and more reasonable thing for us to do. So we are confident that this Civic Engagement Day will help us to ensure and help us to be a part of the important day tomorrow with voting. I do want to say that this is for our school staff with on 10-month contracts. We, for the rest of our team, for 12-month contracts, we will be working as usual tomorrow on Tuesday, November 6th, but of course, we will provide flex time to folks for voting purposes. And then lastly, I just want to say that the Tulsa Classroom Teachers Association is offering free rides to the polls tomorrow for anyone who needs them, and you can call them at 918-749-2544 for a ride to vote. I have two last things. One, I want to touch on the truancy ordinance as well. I want to say a couple things about that. One is that we have been very strongly focused on the issue of attendance and chronic absenteeism in our district and have significant plans that are underway to improve attendance. And in fact, I was in a meeting today in which I heard really wonderful work that's happening with attendance teams at each of our schools and some just incredible work in community partnership kinds of ways with other organizations to help provide the kind of supports that our families need to be able to get their children to school every day. We certainly welcome the city's participation in this, and I think that one of the things that the truancy ordinance has done is elevated this conversation to be at the forefront of people's minds in Tulsa, and that's a positive thing. However, it is important to know that Board President Schreiber and our Vice President However, it is important to know that Board President Schreiber and our Vice President, Dr. Decker, and I did sign a letter indicating our opposition to the ordinance as it's written. We've been actively involved in the task force that was working on this, but the final result did not address the concerns that our team raised during that process. I also think it's important to know that while the Tulsa World story indicated we were not at a meeting or perhaps more than one meeting, that is incorrect. We absolutely have been at meetings. We have had members at meetings, including the one that was referenced in the article. We have had members of our teams at these meetings and actively involved. I would also say that board members and I have been meeting personally and calling members of the Tulsa City Council and our mayor on this issue. We welcome this partnership. We know that everyone is going into this with the best of intentions to support students, and we share that and look forward to working together because there are a number of things that the city's involved with around transportation. We also know that because we have one of the highest eviction rates in the country, this is one of the issues that affects our students and their ability to be on time and at school every day. And so there are a lot of things that we can do to work collaboratively with the city on this issue. So we will continue working on this, and we'll be bringing the board and the public an update on what we are doing to make sure that our students get to school every day. And then lastly, I want to talk about the events of the past couple of weeks. Last week, I was also able to join more than 1,000 Tulsans at Bene Amona Synagogue for a memorial service to honor the 11 victims of the shooting in Pittsburgh at the Tree of Life synagogue. And I was actually honored to be asked to lie to candle for one of the victims. And like you, I'm sure that that news, along with other news that we've heard in the last couple of weeks, including hate crime shooting in Kentucky and too many other scary and disturbing acts of hate and violence, have given me a lot to think about, a lot to consider, a lot to wonder about, and honestly pray about. And I've thought a lot about the word sanctuary. Technically, the word sanctuary, in addition to meaning a place of worship like a church or temple like Bene Amona or a mosque for worship, it's also a place of refuge, a place of protection, a place of safety. And when unimaginable horrors make their way into our world, it can be difficult for us as adults to keep our heads up, and we certainly know that it affects our children as well. Parents and teachers don't often have answers to hard questions that our children ask about why these kinds of bad things happen and why people do bad things. And we've seen it so much lately, it's, I know for so many of us, difficult. We start to feel like the optimism and hope that we feel can be diminished as we try to make sense of this kind of violence and suffering. It happened because sometimes the world is a dark place and because people can be cruel. We try to explain that to children. But in places and spaces where love rules, we know that we can find sanctuary from fear and from despair. And we know that our classrooms and our schools have to be these places of refuge for our children and for members of our team. They have to be a place where a bright light of hope and comfort is alive and shining for our children and for our team members. Our schools and our district can continue to focus on being the inclusive and supportive and loving and affirming and welcoming place for all. So we can be a sanctuary in dark times. We can lift up our students and teachers and families and staff and keep them safe in our care. And so our commitment to that will not waver. All are welcome in Tulsa Public Schools, and we love you regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, immigration status, country of origin, ability, sexuality, gender, identity, or expression. Nelson Mandela said that man's goodness is a flame that can be hidden but never extinguished. And we are in so many ways responsible and are the keepers of that flame. So it's my sincerest hope that even as we struggle to understand these recent events, that we remember who we are at our core, that we are a team, we exist to make a difference for children and families in our district, and we are in a district that deeply believes that our diversity is a gift and makes us stronger and better every day. And that concludes my remarks, Madam President.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gist. From there, we'll move to some nonroutine items that require board action. We have several this evening. Our first item is L1, a motion to enter into a resignation agreement with Melanie Mays-Tyler and to authorize its execution by the board president and board clerk. Is there a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item L2 is a motion to enter into a resignation agreement with Wade and Flax and to authorize its execution by the board president and board clerk. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second on the item?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this resignation? I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item L3 is a motion to enter into a resignation agreement with Alyssa Henin and to authorize its execution by the board president and board clerk. Is there a motion? So moved. And second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Mr. Wade, any new business that's arisen during this meeting?
There is none.
Thank you. That will bring us to the announcements. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, November 19th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in the Shell Salmon Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven, Tulsa, Oklahoma. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. That is the longest that has ever taken. Is there a second to adjourn? Ms. Keller's not here.
I know.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.